Join us to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of religious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second it.
Okay, any corrections, changes? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes for approval. Nine twenty-three, executive session.
Oh, wait a minute.
Nine twenty-two.
Jim, I just realized, I don't think the, um...
What?
Economic Development Committee, is that on here?
Yeah.
Is it?
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, alright, sorry.
Okay, minutes, nine twenty-three, executive session, and nine twenty-three, the regular session.
I move we approve those minutes.
Second. Okay, any changes, corrections? Joe?
Yeah, on the September twenty-third minutes, I think that either we should include titles of people like Laura Jacobowski up in the list of those present, or when that person is first mentioned, which would be on the back of the first page.
I just need someone to state their thoughts then.
Right. Can't help you there. The other comment I had was that in the first item where we were acting on the approval of the minutes, this document presently states, "The vote was called to question." And I think what we probably need in that location is something like, "A motion was made," and by whom, I can't recall, "to approve the minutes of both meetings with this minor change to the nine nineteen minutes." Motion was seconded by whom? Not sure. And the last thing is that in the section on the solar projects, under the managers' update, the second paragraph starts speaking in the first voice. Second sentence says, "I spoke with the planning commission," then goes on to say, "Jim and I visited the site." I think the convention has been to talk about, you know, people with their last names, like, you know, "Mr. Jones spoke with the planning commission," et cetera. Just a small... People who weren't here wouldn't know who the "I" was. That's it.
Rob? No, I'm good here. Dick?
Alright, no, I'm okay.
I got one. Under warrants, it wasn't clear who seconded the motion. For the first batch of warrants, Mr. Combs made the motion, and it doesn't say who seconded. They got cut off after "Mister." That's all I got.
Okay, um, motion to approve with changes? With changes and corrections?
So moved.
Second it.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Aye.
Citizens' comments, Sandra Spear, junk vehicles.
I'm Sandra Spear.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been talking, dealing with the zoning people, and also I contacted, emailed Mike and Karen for the pictures of the vehicles. I live at one forty East Crystal Haven. The two vehicles, the junk trucks, are at one oh two West Haven, um, East Haven, East Crystal Haven. And he's not, the gentleman, I believe, has been given a citation, is that correct, Mike?
Correct.
And this has been ongoing since I had questioned it in 2018, in February, and then when Jonas became zoning, I had emailed him and asked him about the situation, and he had said that the citation was issued. Well, as of today, the trucks are still there, and I would like to know if the select board or somebody within your group can help us having him obey the ordinance and have the two trucks removed.
If it's, if it's a violation of the zoning ordinance, is that correct, Mike?
Yeah, it's interzoning.
Then that violation is handled either in environmental court or in civil court?
Environmental court.
Okay.
Which is not recommended by, our zoning administrator came to me after speaking with you folks, and he would like to see that taken out of zoning and put into an ordinance that the police can enforce that would go to a civil court. That way, if they don't do it, you know, if they go to renew their license and stuff, they'll be, it'll be held up versus going to environmental court. Jonas's words to me were, it could be tied up for six months and, and lost in, in environmental court and this kind of issue. So it's something longer term than right now as far as enforcing.
If there's an outstanding ticket, he cannot renew his license, correct?
Correct.
So at least at that point in time, we could get his attention, which may not help you much, that could be conceivably three years from now.
Well, when was, when was the citation given, do, do we know?
I, I don't know, I was, I was speaking, Jonas was speaking to me about it, he was the one that followed up on it, so I don't know what, when, the exact date of the...
He didn't tell me, but obviously the trucks have been there for years because, I mean, you have the pictures. The one truck has all kinds of stuff in it, but the truck is sunk into the ground up to the axle, and the other blue truck, I mean, we, we have pictures, the other truck is slowly sinking into the ground too. And between our properties, there's that brook that flows quite heavily, you know, in the spring from the runoff, and his truck with most of the stuff is right next to that spring. So if we have a lot of water, that would also put that truck into an issue where it could go into the, you know, sink down more over on that side. So this is, I, I believe this has been going on for quite a few years for it to be that sunk.
I, I think it's, it's following up with Jonas on this point, at this point, to see, I really don't know what the enforcement is on the zoning side. There, it may be environmental court is it, which is, can just prolong and belabor this whole process, so I think I need to follow up with Jonas and, and get his recommendations on how to proceed outside of being in the, our zoning ordinance and not being in a formal ordinance that the police can enforce.
Joe?
Thank you. I, I might be mistaken, but I, as a former member, a present member, excuse me, of the DRB, I, I believe that there, that the penalty accrues over time, that it isn't a one-time fine, but that for every passing day, I believe, the fine is, is issued again. And Jonas may be right in saying that this would be better if it were handled as a civic, a civil matter, but we can't, it'll take a while to change that, and in the meantime, I think you should ask Jonas about that provision of our regulations, and it may be that the, the threat of accumulating fines is enough to motivate the property owner to deal with the issue.
Do you have anything else?
There's just, there's just two vehicles there? Two?
Two. When we first moved there, he had three trucks, and then when I spoke to Jeff, the previous zoning person, he, he had spoken or sent something to the gentleman, so one truck that was runable was removed. So now we're just down to the two.
So does our ordinance allow two unregistered vehicles in the door yard?
No.
It does not?
I believe, I think on the zoning is one, they can't, no more than one.
Yeah, and then...
I'm just asking with the zoning regulation.
Yeah, when you copied and, when you sent me the, um, the regulation, I think it says, "No more than one unregistered or unlicensed vehicle or open storage is permitted in any district, and such storage will not be in the front yard." This is in the, I mean, this is the front yard, I would assume. "And in any residential district only, the following are allowed, and they must be permanently screened from view. Bands and trucks are more than twelve-ton carrying capacity that are used for commercial purposes," but he can't use them because they're stuck in the ground, "cars used for purpose of competitive racing, and items for commercial purposes, junkyards, antiques. Any open storage only adjacent to a residential district must be permanently screened from view, even if in the side or rear yard. Nothing in this section shall prohibit open storage related to agricultural uses in any district." But this, I mean, obviously, he's using these for storage.
Okay, is it, is it reasonable to ask Mike to follow up with Jonas and ask for a report at the next board meeting?
Absolutely.
Progress has been made?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Senator.
Okay.
Anything else under citizens' concerns? Yes, Rob?
Uh, Rob Steele, I was just curious, what was going on in the sidewalk?
Nothing at this point, I, it's no change from last time. The only thing that, that I'm working on right now with the highway crew is that, that little road that goes through Sussex property from Drake Road comes back out into the parking lot of Iron Lantern. We're gonna actually close that off as the, as the project was designed. The, all they're gonna do is they're gonna move their access point north, they're gonna move the mailbox, so they can still cut through there, but they're not gonna be in the state right away.
Got to answer for you best he can, Rob. Any other citizens' concerns? Okay, we'll move on to you, Susan.
I think Mike's gonna have a discussion.
Yeah, Susan and I just met before the meeting. Something came to her attention, she brought it to mine, was supposedly there's a, a project, there's a state project for sidewalks on Main Street that the town is already engaged in and actually hired an engineer for. That's not something I have any records on, so I'll follow up with the state on that. Susan and I will both work on it, but that said, you can't apply for a grant where something's already in the process of. So the transportation alternative grant for the crosswalks at Castle University and the sidewalks at, from Castle University to Main Street and then Main Street to the depot, with lighting is what we were gonna pursue, well, that just got, sounds like it just got shot in the foot. So what I'd like to propose, after talking with Susan, is to, if we can do it, to go after two scoping study grants under the transportation alternative program. One would be the scoping study for the sidewalks and the crosswalks, and one for stormwater. Of the two, I believe stormwater is the worst. We need to address that one before any crosswalks. It's a huge problem. The scoping study will really dig into the effects of what we're doing right now, where water's being discharged both into the Castle River and onto the aquifer that our drinking water comes from. So those are some really serious, I think, more important than crosswalks. But if we can, if we can get a scoping study for both of them, that's what I'd like to do, we have the money in engineering for that and, and the sidewalk budgets. So that, that'd be my proposal, is twenty-two November is the, the date that Susan has to have this stuff done, so I, I think that it's worth investing in both of them, but if only one could be done, I would recommend that we go after the stormwater grant, do a scoping study, and then follow along with a engineering construction. The grant I was going to apply for, I got word through V-Trans that next year it's not gonna be there, so don't bother doing a scoping study, 'cause then you wouldn't have any money for construction and engineering following it. So taking that under advisement and then speaking with Susan tonight, her, her find of that there's already a, a grant out there, active since 2010, that changed my thinking on everything. So I gotta follow up and find out what's going on with that. And Lamarron Dickinson was, what you found was an engineer?
Yeah.
Which they did the other, one of our phases of the sidewalk, so it's very possible, and it just got lost in the abyss somewhere since 2010.
That would date back to Charles, I believe.
Yeah, as I said, Charles is probably the one that filed for that.
Anything else you wanted to add, Susan?
No, I, um, you know, talking to Mike, it seems that the stormwater scoping study would be, it would identify different alternatives of how to address the seminary stormwater issue, Seminary Street, and then come up with, you'd have to have a series of public meetings and come up with a preferred alternative, looking at the natural resources, any showstoppers of, for a project, and then that is almost, once you've done that scoping study, then next year you could apply for the engineering and construction, because they always wanna see you do a scoping study first with this funding.
Any other comments in the board? You need a motion?
I'd just like to hear something, to get the board's approval, either, I'd like to do both, but if we can't, if we, the grant won't allow that, I'd like to just do the, the one for stormwater, and then find alternate means to deal with the sidewalks, crosswalks at the university.
I agree with your priorities.
So then I guess we should...
Approval to apply for both a scoping study for the crosswalks and sidewalks at Castle University and a scoping study for the stormwater issues in the village. I'll say the village, 'cause it's not just Seminary Street, it's Elm Street behind by Kerry Fowler's, it's all over the place. So it's not just Seminary Street.
So moved.
Second. So moved, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You guys just had that, in your next select board meeting, there'd be a public meeting prior to, maybe it's, I don't know, six thirty or part of your meeting, because part of the application requires that you have a public meeting for public input on that grant application, so...
You think it would, thirty minutes would do it?
Yeah.
Do it, okay.
I mean, I, I don't know, were people gonna come up in arms about this, or...
About the stormwater runoff, is that what we're talking about?
Either that or those crosswalks.
I don't care.
I think it'd be up in arms.
I doubt there would be much opposition, there might be some people that would love to see it happen, particularly a couple residents on Seminary Street. Okay. We adopted that motion. Okay, I'll say it. Okay, formation of a community development economic revitalization committee. The economic development committee met last Thursday, three members were able to be present over five, and after hearing Mike's presentation and a couple comments, a couple citizens, three members voted to support the formation of the new committee. So, so would like to make a motion to that, and then further discussion, we'll discuss it.
Well, do we need a, a motion to disband the old and...
Yeah, that's what we need.
Sorry, oh, I thought it'd already been done with those guys. We have to accept that, is what we do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess I'll make a motion...
Is that what you're doing, Zach?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to do both, in the same motion. I'll make a motion to, I guess, disband the economic development committee and create the, what are you calling it?
Community Development and Economic Revitalization Advisory Committee.
There you go.
Okay, for a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pass it. Okay. What's your question? Same thing as yours, Zach, I think, have we actually placed an ad for unattended residents and businesses to, or do we have to wait till this actually officially?
We, we had to wait, Chairman had mentioned there that we had, this needed to happen before we start seeking membership.
So this board will actually have to appoint the members, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, okay. The way it's, the proposal that we have received would be nine members, of which one would be a select board member. Is there some member of the board who would like to volunteer to be on this committee?
Can I recommend Joe Mark to be on the committee?
Joe Mark declines.
At this time. Okay, okay.
Thank you, though, for that vote of confidence.
Anyone else?
A different period of my life, I'd say.
Well, if not, maybe you'd like to think about it, and maybe somebody will volunteer at the next meeting, is that. Okay? Alrighty, let's move on. MHG Solar contract that the town gravel pit, approval?
Okay, so you have copies of the letter from Lois Baldwin and Sam, I mean, MHG Solar's contract. I apologize, gents, but I don't have anything back from, I met with Thomas Hand from MHG Solar last week at the, at the site, and I have a good idea, I, I'm very comfortable on where the boundaries are, or, or the fences would be. I'm, I'm confident they wouldn't impact or encroach on the old town landfill, but there are some stuff in the contract that hasn't been worked out yet, and that is, gives them the exclusive rights to, for roads and, and stuff like that, and I, and we can't allow anybody to have exclusive, exclusivity on anything like that, power lines, roads, so until that's worked out between MHG Solar and the town, I would recommend that we hold off until I can get answers on this. It's not gonna hold the project up, they're not doing anything besides permitting right now, they'd be starting in the spring. We'll still drive on with getting the gravel removed, like we were gonna anyway, but there are some stuff in there that Lois brings up that are valid points that need to be addressed that, so the town has, doesn't put us at a disadvantage later.
Okay, so we just move on to the next item, then?
Unless there's any questions that I can bring back to MHG Solar that the board has.
Nothing?
You're gonna, you're gonna clear all this up with MHG?
Yeah.
All these points?
Mm-hmm.
There are.
There are.
There were quite a few.
Let's just move to table it to the, to hear back from the town engineer.
Alright, motion to table, it's a second?
Yeah, second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Table. What is salt, then?
In your pocket.
Need salt, Mike?
Oh, God, I hope not, Jim, I really don't, but knowing that where we live, I would say that's probably not, that's just a...
I'd be unwise to not do it.
But, so I followed the bouncing ball on this with the state and who they, the, the state's going with and what districts, and what it comes down to is Cargill is who we use, so they're competitive with American Rock Salt, but Cargill can actually dump in our shed where the other folks dump at the mouth of the shed, and we have to move it all in there, so it takes more time, and, and since we're dealing with the same amount of money, I, I would go with Paul's recommendation for Cargill at seventy-six dollars per ton.
Make a motion we purchase our salt from, for the next coming winter from Cargill at seventy-six dollars per ton.
Second.
Okay, motion's second, further discussion?
Just wondering, how many, how many tons are we getting?
Thousand.
We're getting a thousand? Okay.
What do we have from last year?
We did, last year we used more, we used our max on it, so we ordered eight hundred, and then we had up to four hundred more, and we used all of it. So it's, that was, we know what the winter was like, so a thousand is, puts us in the ballpark.
If we have to add more, will we get out of this price?
They will.
So there's nothing left up there now, I guess?
Very little.
I think, oh, okay.
Yeah, like two hundred, not even two hundred tons.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, what is Cargill?
Aye.
Aye.
Highway truck payments?
This one's only, this is the truck payment for the five fifty with the wing on it. So the original quote from Dodge was five point zero four percent for a three-year lease to own, which included the truck and the plow package. I spoke with Nancy Trudeau and asked her to see what our bank would, would quote, and they quoted less interest, two point five percent. Again, it's a three-year loan, there's no lease, it's a, we can split the payments up, we can pay once a year, we can pay twice a year, sometime, I'm working that with Nancy because you pay less interest that way, or we put it on principal, whatever, however we do it, but if we went with the five point zero four percent, it was gonna cost a little over a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-four, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. This one's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand with all the interest figured in. So this is our better deal under a three-year amortization for that, that loan. I would recommend that we go with People's United Bank versus going with Dodge.
So moved.
The second.
Okay, any discussion? I've got a question.
Yep.
How many trucks are we buying?
Two.
How many are we selling?
Two. Right now.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna, I support the two. If you wanna buy two, wanna buy one, then get rid of two. You wanna buy two, get rid of three.
You think we have too many trucks, Jim, is that what you're saying?
There, listen...
That's a valid conclusion.
I would, I've, I've spoken to Jim about this, and I, I've said I have not, I'm certainly not opposed to going through that, those motions to see, do an analysis of where we're at. I've spoken to our town mechanic, and he's given me his opinion. I think there's a way to reduce the fleet without jeopardizing or, you know, putting the town residents at a disadvantage for services, just have to work out the timing of it. But we would get two right now, and we're gonna get rid of the three fifty, and we'll get rid of a single axle for the tandem, which leaves us basically either getting rid of another single axle or the old Ford that we have, and that's where the rub is right now, is figuring out the best options.
My only, not to delay this, but my only question is if you don't do it, and as you had, it's not going to happen. That's the way it works.
I'm not gonna go knee-jerk on it, I just wanna make sure that we're...
No, I, I heard your recommendation, and I, I agree with it, and you, out of the road commissioner.
Because I am gonna be coming back to you guys with a proposal to, to buy a pickup at some time and pass on the old pickup to Bob Ward, whose vehicle is, needs, you know it needs to get rid of, Jim, I mean, we've, we've talked, that old blazer, military blazer, that's not, it can't be inspected again, he's done enough.
And what are you talking about coming back, next fiscal year?
Probably, probably in the May timeframe, yeah, it'd be, it'd be money from the next fiscal year.
When you say get rid of the three fifty and single axle, what do we do? We, we bid those out, or?
Yeah, we'll put them on an ISI bid of the state site and try to get the, much as we can for them, 'cause nobody wants to trade them.
Yeah.
There's a, we'd be taking up, we'd be losing on that.
So if we vote, if we vote to buy two trucks in this fiscal year and get rid of two, we're in violation of your recommendation.
No.
Yes?
I was talking about a third one, not two. Right now, right now, we agreed...
Talking about streamlining the fleet.
Yeah.
Without any damage to services.
Right.
And you were talking about, obviously, getting rid of new vehicles, and...
We're buying two this year, we, you've already approved that. The first one that's making its way out of this, out of manufacturing is the Ford F-150 that's sitting, it was sent to get the plow package put on it. The tandem that you authorized, we won't see that probably till December, so by the time we get it, get it on the road, we're, we have to get rid of two other vehicles. I don't wanna get rid of it until we have one here, because if, if something delays it, then we won't have a truck, so...
Just, just for the record, it's a, it's a Dodge thirty-five hundred we're getting, right?
Yeah, did I say?
It's Ford F-150.
It's a Dodge. There's a big difference there.
I don't wanna have to correct that.
Yeah, thanks.
I think, it's a thirty, it's a thirty-five hundred, is what we're getting, right, from a Dodge?
Five fifty, I think.
No, no.
Oh, they don't make five fifty. Five fifty's a Ford.
Or fifty-five.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Is it fifty-five hundred? I don't know why.
I thought it was fifty-five hundred.
Oh, maybe it's fifty-five hundred.
Which is the same as basically five fifty.
Okay, so where are we, gentlemen?
It's a big truck with a plow on it.
Well, I make a motion, we go with a two point five percent interest, I mean, that's what the question is, I think, here, it's not...
Yeah, use People's United versus the five point zero four from Dodge.
That's kind of the same.
Oh, it's already been voted in consent?
It's been moved in second, it hasn't been voted on.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, let's call the vote, all those in favor?
It's ready to discuss.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna vote no, you know why I'm voting no. I won't, not voting no.
You don't know, we used the word you asked.
Two point five as opposed to five point zero, I'm just voting no, because it's the only opportunity to try to, shall we say, streamline the fleet. Okay, all right, let's move on.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Just a, a comment, I, I don't feel qualified to have an opinion about whether our fleet is too big, too small, or just right, but if I'm gonna be asked to consider that question... But if I'm going to be asked to consider that question in the future, I'd like to be able to understand that in some kind of relative context. I mean, where do we stand compared to other towns of our size in the state?
We got a chart last fall, didn't we?
The town did a capital improvement plan that, matter of fact, Susan Schreben worked on with Paul with recommendations and replacement plans. So we have that information available.
So maybe we can do it, Joe, that maybe we can get that information. That would be very helpful, I think. Maybe we can inventory all the equipment we have and compare it with other towns our size.
We've already got that. We got that last fall.
I think we have had that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll...
I apologize if I didn't remember that one.
Shaping up things, that's why I didn't have it.
You'd still have it, wouldn't you?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, moving on, gentlemen?
Yes.
Bid award, wastewater treatment plant, doors, windows, replacement.
Well, seeing as winter's creeping right around the corner, we've...in your packet, we sent out requests for bids, seeking quotes from all those folks that are...11 companies that are on that list. And we only have one. And so I'm going to either...we'll go through the winter with not replacing the doors and windows again and keep rebidding this. This is the third time we've sent bids out for this job. And the only person that has sent back a bid was Jim Roberts.
So we had a pre-bid meeting on September 5th and out of the 11 companies that were invited, two showed up and only one of those submitted a bid.
And that's the last one. We had submitted bids before that, too.
Does this not...does this amount fit within our budget?
It absolutely does.
Does? Okay, all right. Is there a motion, Joe?
Make a motion we accept the bid from Jost Construction for $13,800 for replacement windows and doors at the wastewater treatment facility?
Second.
Okay, discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Will this be done?
Yes.
Now I got to get ahold of him and let him know that he can start working.
When is he planning on, sir?
Okay, okay.
Bid award for Belgo Road, you chair?
Yes, so again, we invited, I think...I don't have the list here, but we...I think it was 13 contractors we invited. And of those, three gave us bids. And this is for all the damage that was done from that April 15th storm on Belgo Road. And we did a pre-bid meeting up there, walked the entire length of the road. So everyone had a chance to understand what was expected and the roads and bridge standards that are needed to be met on this. And taking all of that into consideration, I would recommend that we go with Teconic Excavating for $42,000. But no matter what, this project may not get completed before weather closes them down. So I've talked to Paul about it. We know where the culverts that need to get replaced immediately and those areas that are 5% greater or more that need stone line ditching, that really are feeding those culverts are the priority. And then cleaning up gravel out of the woods and out of the right-of-way will become the lesser of the priorities that can be done in the spring. But right now, I have my reservations about whether that would get all done before winter.
When can he start if he gets the bid?
He's waiting to hear whether or not he gets a call tomorrow or not.
So then when will he start if he gets a call tomorrow?
As soon as we can get him up there.
In other words, he can start immediately?
Yeah, he's...because he also applied for another contract in the town, so he can't do both. So he's waiting to see if we award a bid or not to him.
Does he have...does he or you or in combination have any idea how long it will take?
No.
To the project?
No. I mean, they might have discussed it. I wasn't on site with them. But we didn't put a...we didn't put an end date because we didn't know what the weather's going to be like this close. So we know what the priorities are. Of all of the...there's three culverts that are a huge priority that have to get swapped. And then there's about 750, 800 feet of stone lining ditch that is a priority. The rest of it can be phased in.
I think the thing that bothers me a little bit is the second bid, which is what? 5500 more. But they've included a proposed finish date of 11/29 this year.
That's proposed.
It's proposed, that's the problem.
Right. They don't guarantee that they'll finish it by the 29th.
Just doesn't seem we can get things done on time, that's all.
Well, I could tell you that dealing with contractors this year, thank God for contractors because they seem to be busy and making money. But it's hard to fit into someone's schedule unless you're like the first ones. And we discussed this, Jim. You know, next year for even paving, we need to be putting bids out by...into the March timeframe, February, March, to get on their list early. The money's already been appropriated, so...
Any other comments or just one question? Sure, go ahead.
Is there any grant implications on this if it doesn't get done this year or is this...
No.
Okay.
No.
Is there anything to indicate the road would not be passable this winter?
No. The road's passable now. This is...this would be in the...any heavy stormwater runoff, we don't want it to, you know, the damage that was done that we had put so much time and effort into, we don't want to undo. Because a culvert isn't capable of taking the water that...the volume of water that comes off from those hills up there with heavy rain.
Okay, any other comments?
Just what do we do with the debris? I see it gets staged, but what does that mean, Mike? Is that something we can use, another...we can't use it?
Yeah, so basically that...FEMA wants to know when you remove debris, they want to know where it's going and if that's an intermediate holding area. And if it is, where it's going to end up.
They need to know that.
They want to know, like if you put whatever, 10 cubic yards and fill in a big hole somewhere, they want to know.
Okay.
So right now, we've told them that we can use it at where that solar project's going to go. If that goes through, we have to remove the gravel, the good gravel out of there. So we need something to fill that back in. So we'll use this kind of debris to fill it back in. So it'll...I don't have to worry about where it's going to go in the future. It's going to go in the ground right there and...
Sure.
Any other questions? Motion?
Make a motion we approve Teconic Excavating for the sum of $42,000 for Belgo Road project.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Repose, Bob?
No, I'm not opposed. No, no. I was a late aye.
Okay.
I was just looking to see where it's in it.
Okay, moving on to the tree trimming. North Road Elementary School, Belgo, Town Office.
This is your pleasure on this one, gents, because we asked three vendors, three contractors to come in, Trees, Valencourt, and Paul had another gentleman that was out of Wells, I believe, to give us bids. And Trees was the only one that came back and gave us the bid. They actually drove around to the sites and came into the town office and asked for clarification on a couple of things. But so we were getting complaints about buses hitting the...branches hitting the buses. And before we end up having bus windows shattered, we need to get this stuff trimmed back. And some of it's at a height where it's just...it's not really feasible with a pole saw. So it's...you have to have the equipment to do it and we don't have the equipment to do the higher stuff. So this is where this came from. And since we only have one bid to get this thing done, I would recommend that you approve Trees Incorporated.
What's the total sum for all these?
Yeah, what's the total?
I can't figure it out, Mike.
Let me do some public math for you. So Belgo Road was 5150. Elementary School Road was 1350. And North Road was 2100.
Just those three?
Six.
Yes, right now. I had one for the wastewater treatment facility, but that didn't make it in here.
Well, there's three different pages of...
Yeah, there's other ones.
Yeah, I'm looking. They got South Street on the second page. There's a north fence line, south fence line. So, yeah, he did put it in there. It's not in the...it's not on the front page, though, is it?
I think Bob's question is what's the bottom line, right?
Yeah, we got to total these out. Somebody just needs to...just total them all, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
I think Zach's on it right now. Zach and Bob are on it.
I'll let Zach do it.
Hope you guys come up with the same number.
Yeah, I probably should do that.
I got another question. Joe? Like Paul, where they're siphoning. This is somewhere in the neighborhood of 15,000.
The money for the transfer station comes out of their own maintenance. They have that. And the rest of it comes out of the highways budget. It's not coming out of the Tree Warden's budget.
I was going to say the Tree Warden's budget doesn't have this much money in it.
No. And they're all good. It is a lot of money. I'll agree that it is a lot of money, but as I was talking with Paul about it, they haven't done that kind of tree clearing in quite a while, height-wise, getting this stuff down.
What do you got, Zach?
16,295.
That's what I got.
Okay, guys, we're on the same page. So the motion is not to exceed... Wait a minute, does this include the wastewater treatment one as well?
I didn't see that on here.
It's on the second page. South fence line, north fence line.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So that's what this little chart is. I was wondering if that's what that was.
Yeah. They're growing the fence and they're actually tearing the fence apart.
So that particular page to the tune of, it's around 6,6500 is the wastewater treatment plan.
Correct.
I'll make a motion we award the tree trimming bid to Trees Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $16,295.
Second.
Joe, does that price include taking the stuff away?
It is. Minus the stuff that can be burned, they'll leave that stuff and our guys will pick it up. They'll limit and anything that can be burned, our town guys will pick up. If they cut down, like around the wastewater treatment facility, it's all box elders and Elms. It's all kind of crap. But they said if you want it and burn it, we'll leave it. But otherwise, they chip it and take it away.
My concern is school road. I'm into the school road. There are trees that need to be trimmed there, if they've ever been trimmed. Not in 30 years I've been there. And I just don't want to see all the wood chips and debris all around my property. Because that's not a right-of-way up through there. As we have been here for a while now, that's a 50-foot access strip. So don't measure from the center of the road over to the north side because it's not a right-of-way.
Okay.
And I'm not opposed to cutting trees. And if you're cutting trees on me, that's fine. But I want the stuff to disappear. I want to see it left there. And my other question is, does that price include the town office fence line? Yes.
Here? No. Our tree...
Because that was on.
I don't have the wastewater. I don't have that on my table.
She should have on there.
Yeah, it was on there.
Must have an extra sheet there.
Where we...what page, Joe?
Says Town Office Fence Line.
Oh, that's...I don't think...I think...did she put...the sewer plant's not on there, is it?
No, I don't have that on.
So she must have made a mistake then.
Sewer plant's the second.
Sewer plant's the second page.
No, I mean, on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
She didn't put it on the agenda, so it's probably...she meant to say wastewater treatment facility fence line because there was nothing here. I didn't have to...
But doesn't the fence line need to be trimmed?
Our chief ward's doing this one.
Oh, okay.
I would already warn the bid for fence, so...
Motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 You like it?
Yeah, aye.
You made one, okay. Okay, moving on. Adopt the Fire Department bylaws. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to refuse myself from the decision and the discussion, but I will answer questions. Don't we have an officer here? We do. Does someone want to briefly explain this or explain the changes, basically?
Should we have a motion to...
Oh, hold it. Okay, yeah, we need a motion first.
I would move that we approve the Castleton Fire Department bylaws.
Second.
Okay, open for discussion.
Basically, we, with our ice water rescue service that we had Grantport last year, we had a few members outside of the fire department that wanted to assist us with that. And there was no way to cover them under the town insurance. So we put some verbiage in there to allow them to be a...
Uncalled technical support.
Uncalled technical support people. So they'll be covered under that. And we have also made some changes so that it's a little more lenient for the volunteers not to be dismissed. There was some verbiage in there that they had to make 50% of the calls, 50% of the points, which when we looked at it was pretty strict. We probably would have lost half the department if we went by that. And then there was some verbiage in there that they have to meet a certain amount of points to be able to vote for officers. I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah, the only other thing, we changed some of the...we changed...we cleaned up a lot of things where there was redundancy and vagueness. You know, we cleaned up a lot of that. And we also changed the way the...any candidates for the officers' positions will be nominated a month ahead of time. So everyone knows who's planning on doing what.
Got basically it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions in the board? Joe?
I had a couple of small questions. One was about Section 2 active probationary. The last line says that somebody from an adjacent community needs to have the understanding of that community's fire chief. Do we mean by that the support, the concurrence?
Yeah, in order to have somebody else join our department from a different zone, we want to have their blessing that...
That sounds like a good idea. I think the word "understanding" is a little weak in that situation. I think the word "understanding" is a little weak in that situation. I would substitute, suggest you substitute "support" of that community's fire chief. Is that acceptable?
I guess it is.
I don't think the membership would have a problem with that at all.
And this is just a question from, information from me. In the discussion of the point system on page 15, it refers to the distribution, funds available for distribution to the membership or from the town grant will be dispersed in accordance with the policy manual. I guess I just need a little education on that process, not the process of distributing the money, but the town grant piece of it. I wasn't-
Grant may be the wrong word, it's a line item in the budget, and the town provides the fire department with an amount of money, I don't recall the exact amount, but it's substantial, it's like 10,000 or 15,000, and that's divided among their membership. Basically, you know, via this formula you see here, which is directly dependent on their A, amount of responsibility, and B, the amount of attendance they have.
Gotcha.
And it's intended to cover, you know, the cost of a little bit of gas and-
It's a good idea.
Things like that. But grant may be the wrong word, but I'm not sure what the right word would be, we didn't really talk about that.
Is it an appropriation?
Yeah, it's an appropriation from the town. So we could change that word, grant for appropriation.
It's part of their annual operating budget.
Yeah.
Do you dig that correction?
We can change that.
Okay. Bob, any questions?
They're all good.
Zach?
All set.
I guess I'm all set. Any other questions? Made a couple of changes there, and so on, but seemed to be agreeable to the department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That other one's on page two, Joe?
I think so. Yes.
I'm gonna change the understanding to approval there, if that makes sense. You wanna take this in Sea Forest, or you want me to, Dan?
You got your original, right? You got your original?
Well, I can't, it is now.
Don't throw so many pages in.
He signed that one.
Yeah, this is the one I had to sign.
Yeah, you're not just not ready for signature yet, if there's gonna be two changes.
Well, just the, he just signed the header page, so that's still good.
Yeah. Well, we should all sign that.
That's not what it says?
Oh, okay.
It's just the chairman and the fire chief.
Okay. Errors and omissions.
Joe's not here, so this is the first I'm reading it, so.
This is from Mary Jo.
Yep. We overbilled Comcast about $4,000. We overbilled Comcast by about $4,000.
Right.
Joe, I am confused about the legality of it, it's probably all the right thing to do, but Comcast, it's responsible to pay personal property a tax on, to the state for education, but not to the town for-
Didn't make much sense to me either.
The state is common in situations like that, even if you authorize tax stabilization, they still want their piece of the pie, with no exemptions.
So the 4,000 represents a, an assessment of, on their inventory that we were going to be collecting when we shouldn't have been.
Did Comcast pay it already?
Yes.
Did they pay it already?
I don't know. They should get a refund. They updated, they got a refund.
Do we, do you need a motion to accept our assessor's recommendation for the errors and omissions on Comcast PID P00000099?
I believe we do.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, assess the recommendation of the assessor, Mary Jo Teeter. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we have something else here. That's Matt's proposal.
This is, I know she talked to you guys, the board, a while back about a new mapping program, and tried, her and Jonas were in here talking about, you know, the differences between what we're doing and what they'd like to do, but again, she's, I was out last week, couple days, and this was submitted, so I haven't read it yet.
Well, if I recall correctly, Mary Jo came and talked to us, and we, and she asked for approval or permission or whatever the right word is to go ahead and pursue this, and get a proposal, and we told her to go ahead, and so I guess this is it. This is what we asked for.
Can someone help me understand how this relates to what we approved? There's no data on this. Back several months ago?
We didn't actually approve her to make any purchases, she just wanted permission to explore this, and told us it was gonna cost more than what we're currently doing, with CAI Technologies and the Russell Graphics would be more money, but she was telling us, and I won't pretend to remember everything she said, about how much better it would work for assessors and for tax collection, and that in the long run it would be more efficient, but I don't recall much beyond that.
Well, I guess I'm looking at the last page, which seems to have authorized a contract for $20,000, and that's the same amount that appears on the first page for CAI Technologies.
Joe.
That is CIA.
2,000.
That was for the current year.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, that's current year.
So she's saying at the bottom she wants to go with Russell Graphics, because that's what they use in Polkney, and their maps are user-friendly, and there is a, she wants to have the names put on the parcels, I know that was one of her big things, and we couldn't do it through CIA Technologies for what we were paying.
Would this still fall within the budget?
It's in her budget.
It is in the budget?
Yeah.
I move we approve this contract with Russell Graphics for 3,500.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. It's, there's an additional cost to have all of the names attached to the parcels. That's an extra, I think, 8,900, so it's really not 3,500, it's 12,400 total, if we do it the way Mary Jo is recommending.
My opinion is we really, before we approve this or disapprove it, we really need the assessor here to answer a couple of pertinent questions.
8,900 does not enter budget.
I do believe that it's an 8,900 dollar charge to reformat all the maps, and then after that, the annual fee will be 3,500 to 2,000.
Exactly.
But I really wanna hear, I really think the assessor should be present to answer some questions.
Yeah, I would agree.
Want to hold this over to the next meeting? Ask Mary Jo to hear?
So I withdraw my second. Now we do that?
No, it's all my motion.
Make a motion to table.
One of the things, chairman, before you guys go too far, she did mention that the last time that, that we get money from the state for maintaining the grand list, and this, that's where she was recommending, if it goes over her budget, where the money would come from, that one-time shot, to pay for it out of that, and then just have the maintenance fees as such, 3,500 or wherever it ends up being, but that's what she asked for last meeting, I know, I remember that.
Okay, well, pardon?
Can I ask the town manager another question?
Sure, go ahead.
If we did that, the 8,900 is a pretty substantial amount for the next reassessment, if I'd say, what, maybe 5% or 6%, so what would that do to us when it's time for reassessment? What do we have the money for that then?
Well, we've been putting the $20,000 in there a year and haven't touched it since the last reap, the last re-phrase.
The last time we did this, it was around 200,000 to get it done, and that's about what we had on hand, so I just wanna make sure that we're not kicking the can down the road and creating a problem a few years down the road from now.
I-
Having a 5% shortfall in the money, we need to do this.
I can't answer that for you now, but I will go back to Mary Jo, discuss this with her, and bring it back to the board by the next meeting.
Well, that's what I'm asking you to do.
Great.
And there was a motion to table on second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Andrew's update? You have anything for us, Mike?
The only thing I had, it came in by email, was updated to finish the garage, I did go up there and meet with Jared Ellis and Paul, so just to give you the quickest update I can. Bill Lyle finished the trusses, Jared looked at him and said, "Great job, everything seems to be, you know, top-notch job by Bill." The concrete's done, Jared poured all that, of course, he said it's good. And when they got to the, to fix the overhead doors, the tracks were all rotted, and once they took off the sheathing on the outside of the sheet metal, there was a bunch of stuff in there, boards, insulation that needed to be replaced, so Jared said, "Well, that wasn't in my bid," to replace all that, because they couldn't, they couldn't do the tracks and fix the tracks for the doors without replacing the wood and the insulation, so he gave me a quote of $2,500. I do have it in my email, I apologize, I don't have it with me, for him to finish that job. Right now, the doors are not shut, we got insulation stuffed up there, weather's getting colder, so as long as that stuff's up there, that furnace is running, on those mornings it's cold. But anyways, it's $2,500 additional to complete this job, to like, say it's done.
With your pleasure, gentlemen. If you have any.
Well, I'm putting you in a hard spot, because if it doesn't get finished, we're between a rock and a hard place.
I know, but this was the same thing with the trusses that you came back to us, and we gotta take the blame for that, too. You came with us with an amount for the trusses, but we never asked you if that was the installation, then you had to come back to us, say, "No, it's another $4,400 for installation of them." So we approved that, so we're kinda like under the hammer every time you come to us, we know, you know, we gotta, it's just discouraging that we-
Well, I do, I'm not, I'm certainly not doing it on purpose.
No, I know, I know, Mike. I'm just trying to put you in our spot here, you know, you've come, so far two meetings in a row, asking us extra money, extra money, extra money. It's gotta happen, I mean-
Well, I've been, I've worked on a lot of old buildings, and-
I understand that.
I've worked on old buildings without getting surprises.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the town manager to increase the budget or spend another $2,500 to finish the job and provide with the wood and the insulation it needs.
Second.
And throw the discussion. All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's gotta happen.
I don't like it either, but we gotta do it.
That's it, Mike?
That's it for me.
Okay. Select board comments? Zach?
All set.
All set. Dick?
I'm good.
Bob?
I'm good.
Joe?
I'm good.
We're all good. Okay. Purchase orders for approval, we don't have the-
I didn't have any.
We don't have the original orders.
No, I wasn't here today, so, no.
You got purchase orders?
The next item is warrants for approval.
Well, I have warrants, I have warrants.
What are the warrants? There's no purchase, we've done all, ask the chairman, can we proceed with the warrants?
I would, hopefully, if we can. And I will. Go for it.
Make a motion, we approve, or warrant number, now you have me to round, warrant number 1014R for 1,300, or $1,300. Warrant number 1014 for 305,432.95. Warrant number 1010 for 18,828.30. Warrant 1003 for 19,444.50. Warrant 0930 for 30 dollars and no cents. Warrant 0926 for 5,387.36. Warrant 0923 for 1,679,770.56. Warrant 0 for 1010P for 15,387.20. Warrant 1003P for 15,478.63. And warrant number 0926 for 14,839.71.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Questions, comments?
I have one comment, or one question. I assume it is, well, I think there may be a discrepancy here between the warrant numbers. We have on our list warrant 0923 for 1,679, et cetera. In our packet, we have a check warrant report 0924 for that same amount. Which is it?
It would have to be 0924 then.
What's on the sheet, that's what.
Okay, so that's 0924. And then I have a second question, this is just for my curiosity, why do we buy a fishing and hunting license?
We're not. People that buy them pay us, and then we have to give a portion of that to the state, the town clerk sells hunting and fishing licenses.
That I knew. Thank you.
Bob?
No, I'm good.
So should I amend my motion to change warrant number 0923 to warrant number 0924? Well, because it only amounts to 1,679,000. Let's pay the score, we're on change.
It's bigger than all the rest of them combined, I, might be a good idea.
Might be a good idea, it's for the school, so we need to do it.
I think she's got it already.
I'll take the liberty to put it up originally. Okay, we're all set on those? Okay, the next three?
We haven't voted.
No, we're gonna vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Wanna do the other three?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll refuse myself from these.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number 1009P for 682.97. Warrant number 1002P for 682.97. And warrant number 0925P for 682.97.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm ready for a heavy, great, and rainy time.
Trying to get the [inaudible] down here, yeah.
Two words? Yep. Yep. Okay, free recap, items for follow-up, anything, gentlemen? Okay, we need executive session, Mike?
Only for labor relations.
Labor relations, okay.